With the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin's been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly in the mics so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you. I assume everyone's computer is okay?
Yeah, it should be. Okay. Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Basim Verdas? I think she's away, actually. Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Faraz Khan? I don't see him. Michael Doherty?
Here.
Konala Kier?
Here.
Chapendo Singh?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here.
We have a resolution, 2025 zoning board attorney resolution. We have a motion to approve.
I'm a second.
We can do this, say, all in favor.
Yes, we did that last night.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. Thank you all. Maybe wait till the end of the hearing. Anyway, hearing section today, G test upon ZDA 240006, C variances in which the applicant constructed in addition to the existing house, in which modifications were made not previously approved, at 435 Wheeler Place Somerset Block 347, Lot 18, and the R15, that's carried to March 6th, and notification will be needed. Next application, Sheri and William Schneider, ZBA 50003, C variance which the applicant seeks to construct a 12 by 24-foot storage shed at 48 Emerson Road Somerset Block 392, Lot 39, and the R20 zone. That will be heard, and do we have everybody present for that? Come on up to the table.
So Mr. Chairman, I'll just summarize the application. So this is a single-family residential property in the R20 zone. The applicant seeks to construct a 12-foot by 24-foot storage structure. The application indicated that it's a prefab A-frame storage shed to house a classic car and storage of lawn equipment. The required setback for an accessory structure of this size is 15 feet. They're seeking a setback of eight feet. In the memo from the technical review committee, we included the sample or the representative picture of what it would look like, as well as the applicant's drawing of where the shed would be placed, as well as some exhibits, if you will, showing where on the property. There's one aerial photograph showing where it would be approximately, and a picture from Google Street View showing its approximate location.
Okay, that, well, first of all, we need to swear again where we go.
Both of you going to testify? One and both, raise your right hands, please. Testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God. Turn the mics on. The green light is on.
I do.
State your full name for both of you. One at a time, spell your last name for the record and your address, and we have a... Another member of the board.
William Scott Schneider, S E H N E I D E R.
Sheri Schneider, S E H N E I D E R.
And your address for the record?
48 Emerson Road.
Thank you.
And is what Mr. Healy described essentially what your, what your understanding of the application is and what you want to do?
Yes.
Is this where, what would be the primary use for the shed?
My wife, her dad passed in September, and he had left her a classic car.
Talk into the mic.
Move the mic over closer. My wife's dad had passed away in September, and he had left her a classic car, 1964 Galaxy 500, and it's a car that he had restored, and we need a place to keep it.
There's no other storage involved, lawn mowers, gas?
Not gas, no. We have another smaller shed for gas, probably some lawn tools and things like that.
Other than the car, that's generally just for the usual residential?
Yes.
Items that people would put in or normally store in a garage?
Yes, absolutely.
Nothing, nothing flammable?
No. The only thing would be the gas that's in the car.
Where do you park the car right now?
It's at her stepmother's house.
Okay, so it's not there yet? Okay.
I would say that the yard, the rear yard variance has, what, 18 feet existing, and it's going to go to 17 feet. So that's basically a foot difference, okay. Same with the rear, that's the house anyway, and then the garage and the side yard. There's any way it could be efficiently made a little bit smaller, because some of these are pretty...
We did look at that, and as far as opening the doors, it's a pretty big car, so, you know, it's pretty wide. It's a little bigger than your typical car these days.
Any other board members?
So you're... Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right here. So no worries. No worries. You're going to be, well, I looked at this, I didn't quite understand it very well, so I went and I looked at the house. And this is not going to be 24 feet wide. It's going to be 12 feet wide, and it's going to go, and are you going to have a garage door on the end of?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's going to match the aesthetics of the house, the angles of the doorway and things like that.
Yep.
It'll be going parallel with their existing garage. The garage now is just, it's way too small for it.
Right. Yes, right, because there was the house, there was the garage, and then there was the narrow space next to, next to where the garage is, but...
Correct.
I can see, if you're going to put it that way, then it, I can understand it then.
We'll have about a five-foot alleyway between the existing garage, the house, and the new one, and this garage shed.
Okay, and then?
Between the two.
You'll have, you'll have a door?
Yes.
On the, you have a garage door on one end?
Yep.
And then there'll be a door on the side in the middle?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I get it now.
Any other questions from the board?
Reason why it's not being placed next to the current garage?
Well, we just wanted to have some access between the garages, between the two. And if we wanted to reside the house, I don't want to put it right next to the house.
What's the proposed distance between the current structure and where you're going to put the shed?
It'll be, it'll be five feet. I just wanted to have an ample walkway between the two.
Are there any other technical issues with this, Mark?
No.
Meets the criteria, Mr. Healy, for C1 and C2 variants?
Well, I think the, I would think what the justification would be, would be a C1, to the degree that, meaning hardship, I mean, the property is, I mean, the house is located where it is, on the property, and the property does get more narrow as it approaches the street, because it looks like it's at, is that at the end of a cul-de-sac?
No.
Okay, it must be on a, on a bend in the road, because the property kind of narrows as it approaches the street. And did you look at, let me, so I'll ask you a question. Have you looked at putting it in a compliant location? Why couldn't it be put maybe further back on the property, then you'd have room?
There's a slope right beyond, right beyond where we'd want to put it, and the backyard has more of a steeper slope.
Okay. And then what's?
Better getting back there also.
Is there also another frame shed?
Yes.
Behind? Okay, so...
I think it's like eight by 10, I think it is.
Okay. So, you know, again, so I think, you know, if, if there, you know, justification would be, would be a hardship situation because of the slope that was mentioned, the fact that there's a shed existing behind it, which I think, you know, indicates where the shed would be, and I think frankly, I'm sure the applicant wants to put the shed off of the driveway so they can access the driveway.
Yes.
So I think all of those things kind of point to locating the shed and the location that they're proposing it, and that results in that eight-foot setback.
Also looking at this, the, three of the variances are really close to what's existing.
There's only one variant.
Only one variant, so that's wrong.
It's just, it's just a setback variance for the shed, the side setback.
If you go to the second application.
Yeah.
That's carried.
No, you got good, it's the first one.
That's the one that got carried.
Yeah.
Mark, I have a quick question for you. Do you think the five feet between the home and the shed is going to have issues with the building code for fire separation?
I honestly can't answer that, because I don't know the building code. All I can say is I'm not aware of that being a requirement. At this size, they, they would need both a zoning permit and a construction permit.
Yeah, that's what I...
So if it's a problem with the building code, then that's a risk they're taking. They won't be able to put it there, frankly.
Yeah, I just hate to see you guys come back, if we can do that.
Yeah, but I don't know the code to answer that question.
How are, I can't find it in the paperwork, but how, how are we on impervious coverage?
They comply. This is the, this is the only variance that they would need for this. And looking at the aerial and the survey, I mean, it looks to me eyeballing it, they're, they easily comply.
You're aware that if, as Mr. Healy indicated, either the zoning office or the construction office denied you your permits, you'd have to come back to the board for another application to place the shed somewhere on the property?
Okay.
Or they could put it in a compliant location, and they wouldn't have to go before the board, but if they, if they needed a variance.
Apparently, they, at the moment, they don't seem to be able to place it in a compliant, otherwise they wouldn't be here.
If they need a variance, yes.
So...
It's just a matter of getting to the backyard. Backyard has quite a bit of room, but it's just the way the slope is and getting back there.
Okay, anyone else? We're open to the public. Is there anyone out there who would like to ask a question or make a comment about this application? So all the neighbors have been served their notice, so I see there's nobody here, so we'll close to the public and entertain a motion.
I move that we grant William and Sheri Schneider at 48 Emerson Road Somerset, New Jersey, the variance, the side lot variance needed for them to be able to build a 24 by 12 backyard A-frame storage structure on their property.
Need a second?
Second.
Subject to the condition previously mentioned.
Who seconded?
I did. Chapendo.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Is it okay for me to vote? I came a few minutes late, but I think I got it.
I think they just started talking, right? You came in at 7:34. That's up to...
I'm going to say yes.
It is okay, Eric? It's up to Eric?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the conference.
Thank you very much. We have to sign this, correct?
No, you don't.
Oh, no, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Manu and Vidhu Goyal, ZBA 250002 variance, C variance, in which the applicant seeks to construct a 650 square foot, one-story addition, 37 Julie Court Somerset.
It's so cute.
Who is here on behalf of whom, and who's going to be sworn? Any, everybody's testifying?
Yes.
I'm the architect, Dan.
Make sure the light's on, folks.
I'm, I'm the architect, Dan Fortunato.
And you are the?
I am Vidhu Goyal.
Manu Goyal.
Are either or both of you going to testify?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll swear you all in. Raise your right hands, please. Testimony, you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Yes.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, and indicate by whom you're, by whom you're employed, and we'll get to your qualification when you start to testify.
It's Dan Fortunato, F O R T U N A T O, and I'm the principal at Fortunato Architecture.
Manu Goyal, G O Y A L.
Vidhu Goyal, G O Y A L.
And you're both a 37 Julie Court?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Fortunato, where's your business located at?
Skillman, New Jersey.
But we need to qualify.
Well, if she's, I mean, Goyal's going to say anything first, or they're going to let the architect talk first?
I will start off the conversation.
All right, why don't you indicate, sir, your qualifications and your credentials?
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York. I have a degree, industrial design, from Ohio State University, and a architecture degree from Drexler University. I've been practicing architecture for 35 years.
That's fine.
The project that we have in hand here, we have one variance that they are seeking for in addition that they need at the rear of the house. Ms. Goyal will explain the reason and hardship, but basically, this is for her parents, and they have a, we have a bedroom addition and some open family area that they wanted to add on to. So the size of the addition is 650 square feet, and that's encroaching by 3.34% on the impervious coverage. So that's what we're here today to, to go over. And the project essentially is just a one-story addition. It conforms to all other setbacks and other requirements for the project. It's just the, the previous coverage is over on this lot.
Could you indicate, Mr. Fortunato, what the additional square footage is going to contain for the record?
It's going to contain 330 square, 330 square feet will be a bedroom, closet, and bathroom, and the 320 square feet will be what we're calling a solarium, basically an open family area.
No kitchen facilities?
I'm sorry.
No kitchen facilities?
No kitchen in this, no.
This will be constructed to complement the design of the house and the neighbor housing, neighboring houses around it?
Yes, we're going to be using the same materials that are on the house right now, and we, pretty much all my designs, I try to do that. I want to make sure it blends in with the house. I don't like to make it look like an eye source sticking off the back, but it is at the rear of the house, though. So the most you will see along the side of the house, it runs along the same line or plane of the side of the house, and then we're just going to, again, match the materials, roof pitches, windows, everything will look the same as the rest of the house.
Okay, the only variance we're considering is impervious coverage, correct, Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
Any board questions? What is, over here, what, what's under the trees? You can't see the trees for, with the picture. Do you have any sheds or anything else back there?
No, there is no shed, nothing.
It's just grass?
It's just grass.
Okay.
No.
It's pretty minimal, not minimal, but it's not an oversized addition by any means. You don't have a storied shed that you don't use that we could ask you to take down to do something about impervious coverage?
No, we don't.
Is there, or have there been any issues with water draining where it shouldn't go?
We have not observed that, no. We have not had any issues.
Your neighbors would say, would say the same thing?
I agree that they would say the same thing, and I do have a neighbor here, Ron, and he's just a couple of houses down, so he's also here to testify if required.
The architecture drawings, we have our site plan on drawing V1 has a swell. You can see the topography that it does swell between the properties. So with drainage, naturally, the way they built this development, has drainage between the properties that does flow out to the street.
Any other board questions?
Nope. Looks pretty good to me.
All right, we're open to the public. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment or ask a question about this application? Then we'll close. If there's no other housekeeping issues, I would...
Mr. and Mrs. Goyal, are you familiar with the recommendations from the Environmental Commission? You both appear, you appeared before the commission a couple of weeks ago, or at least they reviewed it. They suggested the possibility of solar panels on the roof.
Oh, we saw that suggestion in the write-up, but we can still take that into consideration for the solar panels.
That can be done, Mr. Healy, simply by a permit for the municipality? Doesn't require...
But we didn't ask for it.
I'm not, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, somebody was to, they would need permits to put it on, on the roof, yes.
You wouldn't have to come, the question I was asking, you don't have to come back to the board for that kind of thing.
Oh, I see.
That was the reason I asked.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any plans to put solar panels at the moment, no. Thank you.
I would, I'm not an expert in solar panels or anything, but I would wonder if there's even enough surface area on the roof to do more than heat one room that they're building. I'm not sure it's efficient, but I'm not the Environmental Commission, so I wouldn't hesitate to make that...
Different condition. I guess the reason I inquired of Mr. Healy is if it needed a condition of the board, then obviously it might make sense if they wanted to do it at some point in the future, rather than having to come back, but since he's advised the board that there is no requirement for board approval for solar panels, and if they so choose to do so, they can deal with the township accordingly.
Sounds good. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we grant Manu and Vidhu Goyal a C variance to allow them to build in addition under their house at 37 Julie Court. The variance will allow for increased coverage to 33...
37.
What?
37 Julie.
37?
No, 33.4.
Point three.
Yeah, 33.4.
Sorry.
Percent.
You need a second?
I second.
I need to ask you before, if the alternates are second and they're not voting, are they allowed to second it? I've just never had it happen before. I'm not saying they can't, but I don't know that answer to be true.
I would suggest that be a voting member make the second.
So should we, oh, thank you, all right.
This one.
Just do what?
Let's just, can we get someone else who is?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And we don't have to go back and do, okay.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, NYSSMSA Limited Partnership, Verizon Wireless, ZBA 2400021, applicant seeking relief of condition concerning the fence material on a previously approved application for property at 156 Cedar Grove Lane Somerset Block 424.12, Lot 5.01, in the R40 zone.
Where is this?
Thank you, Chairman. Kevin Jones from Zublet Jones on behalf of the applicant, New York SMA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, so I'll just refer to them as Verizon tonight. Verizon was previously approved by this board to construct a 118-foot monopole disguised as an evergreen at the Cedar Run Swim Club at 156.
Don't open your mic.
Sorry. Is that better? Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. So the applicant was previously approved, received conditional use variance approval and site plan approval to install a 118-foot cell tower disguised as an evergreen at the Cedar Run Swim Club, 156 Cedar Grove Lane. One of the conditions of the, of the resolution, and the only thing that the applicant is here for tonight, is to address one condition. Condition number three of that resolution required the applicant to conceal the equipment. So the tower will be powered by electric and battery equipment below the compound, below the tower itself in a fence compound area. So the board imposed a condition by which Verizon would install a 10-foot composite compound fence surrounding the equipment to keep the equipment out of sight, so therefore no equipment will be visible outside of the compound area. So Verizon's proposing just a different type of fence. It was difficult getting the materials for the 10-foot composite fence. Verizon's proposing a 10-foot chain-linked fence with slats that can be painted any color. We proposed, and we showed photo sims, earth tone, which was the original condition. We did see a report by the Environmental Commission, a letter, that opined that they preferred green, so we did prepare some photo simulations that show the fence earth tone, as originally required, but we also showed what it would look like green. And again, that is the only condition. Every other aspect of the application, the tower, the site plan will remain the same, with the exception of this requested change in the fence materials that applicant is requesting tonight.
What's the current fence council?
Well, the current fence, nothing, it hasn't been built yet, but the fence would be a 10-foot composite fence.
Okay. So this is, so Verizon has not built the monopole since the board approved this back in 2017?
That is correct.
I'm still not clear what the, what the reason is for changing the size of the fence. I would think the wood composite fence does a, no matter, compared to any chain-linked fence with any color slats, would do a much better job hiding, for lack of a better term, the facility, and I'm not sure why...
Well, we're not changing the size of the fence. It's really just the materials?
Well, I know, but...
Yeah. Well, the slats, can we show you the photo sims? The slats, they perform the same job. So the goal is to make sure none of the equipment, the ancillary radio and battery equipment, is visible from anywhere in the public. Now, this, this compound's going to sit in the woods anyway, but it's going to be 10 feet tall, the slats are going to be solid, and you won't be able to see any equipment either way. Now, we have photo simulations that show kind of side by side, if you look at the sims...
I'm just, I'm not concerned about seeing the equipment. I'm concerned that you're in the middle, you're in a very remote spot.
Correct.
I don't know why anything needs to be put there that would call any more attention to it, like green slats. There's a lot of...
Yeah, the green slat...
There's a lot of unsupervised activity in the area at different times. There's a lot of unsupervised activity in the area at different times. There, I would think you don't want any, anything that would call attention to the facility.
Agreed. We proposed it with the earth tone slats that would mirror what the composite fence looked like. We prepared an additional exhibit because we received a report from the Environmental Commission, just so the board can have another option to compare to. Both options would conceal the equipment, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, the green, because it's at the lower, there are tall mature trees there, and typically everything at that level, 10 feet or above, is brown because the trees, you know, the green, the foliage doesn't really begin until a little higher up, particularly with some of the evergreen trees in that area when they're, you know, the mature trees there. So the evergreen seemed to make sense, but we did, as, you know, to present tonight, we wanted to make sure that we addressed the Environmental Commission's concern and gave you the option to review.
This is still a stealth tower?
That's correct.
I remember the initial application, this was supposed to be a state-of-the-art facility and indistinguishable once it's up.
It's a Del Barton model mono pine, so it's going to mirror a very large evergreen.
Well, that's why I sort of questioned, you know, you make the facility like that, then we're putting a chain-linked fence around it. I'm going to go with, obviously, whatever the board wants to, but really not in favor of changing the fence. I don't see a reason for it. I think we had, it was established at the original hearing for a purpose. I think the purpose is still sound and, well, that's my opinion on it. Others can have, may have another one.
Mr. Jones, by any chance, are there any pictures that Verizon submitted to this board back in 2017 that shows the proposed fence that you were proposing to build when you got the approval? Not you or your client got the approval?
So what Ms. Connolly prepared takes in consideration what that proposed fence was supposed to look like. We don't have those photo simulations. I'm not sure any simulations were provided. I think that was a condition that was at toward the end of the approval. Initially, it was, it was proposed, I believe, a regular chain-linked fence, and the board during the time of the approving process requested the equipment be shielded.
You're calling a witness?
I'm sorry?
You're calling a witness this evening?
Oh, I do have a professional engineer just to answer some questions about the privacy slats and how they would look and shield.
Raise your right hand, please, ma'am. Testimony or bat gives the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, by whom you're employed and your credentials.
Colleen Connolly, C-O-N-N-O-L-L-Y. I work with Share Design Group located at 100 Corporate Drive, Suite 202, in Lebanon, New Jersey. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York. I have a bachelor's of engineering in civil engineering, and I've been practicing civil engineering for the past 30 years.
If you're giving engineering testimony, we accept the credentials.
Could you just describe the difference between the composite fence and the proposed chain-linked fence with slats?
So the, both of the fences would be...
You gotta move the mic a little closer.
Sorry about that. Both of the fences would be the same height. They would be 10 feet high. The main need for the fence from Verizon's standpoint is to provide security for the site. And additionally, it is to shield the equipment that's inside of the site, which is why the height is 10 feet. That would be higher than any of the equipment that's proposed at the base. The composite fence is made out of a composite of plastic material, and it would be a solid fence. The, what we're proposing tonight is a chain-linked fence that has vinyl slats that are put in the fence, and those vinyl slats can be pretty much of any color within reason that the board would like. And that also provides the same level of screening.
Any questions?
I have a question. Would, it seems to me that the, that the composite fence would be very smooth on the outside and not, would not allow anybody to, say for example, climb that fence to get inside of that area. Unless I'm missing my mark here, the, the chain-linked fence is not going to, is not going to provide the same level of safety and protection of the equipment. People would be able to grab onto the chain-linked fence and make their way over the chain-linked fence to the inside of the area. Would you agree with that?
Well, the vinyl privacy slats actually are kind of woven in and out of the chain link in the fence, so it does really make it a bit harder to climb because that vinyl slat is where someone would try to put their foot in. But this is a 10-foot-high fence, and additionally, all of the equipment inside of the compound does have alarms in it, so if anyone were to try to get into the equipment or anything like that, Verizon would be notified.
And the site is remotely monitored 24/7, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions?
I have one. Your, your original approval was in 2020. Is it still valid five years later?
Actually, 2017.
2017.
Or 2017. I mean, is it still valid? I thought they were good for three years with two one-year extensions.
And you have to request the two-year extensions. You can't just, they aren't automatic.
So to my knowledge, no extensions were requested. I know that they had to get some approvals and exemptions from the county, and there were some, a lot of environmentals that went into this, and also the exemption letter from the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission. That expires, and I do know, in October of 2025. But to my knowledge, no, there wasn't ever an extension. There wasn't...
Yeah, we wouldn't request that. That would come from the applicant's side.
That's correct. They would have come back, you know, to request that. But there were a lot of delays for a number of reasons. There was parking lot work and things of that nature that they had to work out with the swim club, to my knowledge.
Of course.
And finally, you know, they're, they're ready to build, and this is when they realized that the fencing materials were going to be difficult to obtain and things of that nature as they get into the fourth quarter, I guess, of the project.
Yeah, and from my perspective, it's just making sure that we have the legal authority to grant the deviation if it's, you know...
The other thing, was the parking lot, were the parking lot issues ever resolved? Or is that to be done with construction of a cellphone tower?
If by the parking lot issues, I think you mean the requirements that were imposed by DRCC that they had to remove?
Right.
Yeah, my recollection is that that had to be done along with this proposal.
Correct. And Verizon does plan to do, do all of that. Nothing's changing with regard to the original approval but for this.
Along with the sidewalk across the...
Correct.
I have a question.
The macadam's sidewalk. That's the question.
That's what he's checking.
I could say with confidence it's three years with two one-year extensions.
I tend to agree with him. I think it's three and plus two.
The resolution was, and I don't remember...
It was a 2016 application, but it wasn't approved until the resolution was memorialized on August 6, 2020.
No.
Looking at the resolution.
One resolution was November 2, 2016, the original one, but there were, there was another resolution, I think, that Mark's referring to as well.
The board adopted, I'm looking at a resolution actually dated March 16, 2017, in which this board granted the D3 variance and site plan approvals.
Yeah, I think they had to go back because, again, there's a resolution here.
This is what was provided by council, so...
This condition was specified in this resolution.
In the 2017 resolution.
We wanted to make sure we addressed this.
There's, you know, it's going back a few years. There's, there's two resolutions in our file. One is the one, I guess, the original approval, which was in 2017, and then they came back in 2020.
Can, do you have a copy of that, Mark, because I haven't seen it?
It's in the package.
I didn't see it in the pack.
What were the, what were the photo simulations showing comparison of materials? I'm looking at them, and I'm trying to distinguish what's the difference.
So it's, the fence's compound is visible in PS1 and PS5. In PS1A, that's a view of the compound looking, facing toward the southeast. And in that view, that's simulating the composite fencing. And then in view PS1B, you would see the tan, earth-toned privacy slats. And then in PS1C, you would see the green, earth-toned.
Not the green.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Prepared the green ones for tonight.
We prepared the green ones, but we have, did not submit them as part of...
Yeah, I only saw the one A and B.
Sure. And again, we created the green ones after receiving the Environmental Commission letter.
Thank you. We can share. We can share if you want to.
But I think the fundamental question still remains. Are we beyond the timeframe or not? Because it's not a matter of green or brown or anything. If the, the schedule has expired, then...
Okay, while they're looking that up, PS2, the picture, PS2 is a proposed compound?
So PS2 is taken from what I would call the parking area of the swim club that's closest to where the compound is proposed. That's also looking in the southeasterly direction. In PS2, the compound is not visible from that vantage point. Also, similarly, from PS3, which is taken from the main parking lot, again, looking back toward the compound. The compound isn't visible from that view. And then we did a PS4, which was taken from Wexford Way, facing east back to the compound. So that's showing that it's not visible from that location. PS5 is taken walking deeper into the property and like looking back at the swim club, facing just about due north, and that's the other location that we're showing the compound from.
And is PS4 and 5, is that with the green or the brown?
So PS4 does not show the fencing. It's not visible from, from Wexford Way where that was taken. There's just too many, very densely wooded between Wexford Way over. PS5, if you look at PS5A, that would be the originally proposed compound with the, the mixed compound fencing.
So not the chain link?
Not the chain link. From PS5B, that's the chain link with the privacy slats that are in the tan, earth-ton. And then in the set that I just provided, you'll see PS5C, which is the privacy slats that are in the green tone.
So the compound is there, and you use it as yours?
Nothing has been constructed yet. But what is...
What's that building with, with the pallets and everything in front of it? PS, what the heck is it?
These are simulations.
No.
PS2.
I think, yeah, PS2. So in PS2, what you're seeing there with the pallets in front of it, that's an existing shed that's part of the swim club.
So it's not yours?
It's not, it's not Verizon's.
Mark, do you have the 2020 resolution by any chance?
I do. I, I, what it looks like, what it looks like is they, that they had to go back to the board relative to that...
With the parking.
The part to remove the parking. So I think they got the approval in 2017, they must have. I guess in dealing with the DRCC, they, DRCC imposed that requirement that they removed the parking, and then they had to come back here for revised site plan approval. And again, that was, that was in, memorialized August 2020. So that's the latest. And it looks like it was, in essence, a, it was of, they needed, it looks like, and they needed, they needed to come back here, I guess, to amend the site plan, and also that removal required some, a parking variance. That's why they had to come back.
So I guess I'll ask our attorney. What do we do at this point? Do we adjourn the case and let the applicant come back and tell us whether or not the, the thing is still valid or, or, because I don't think we want to dismiss it and then have them have to kind of come back if they're still valid. That'd create some other impediments, I think, but just adjourning the case.
We can carry the application to the next meeting.
Mark?
Yeah?
I don't want to go on the mic.
What's the one after that?
Go for it.
So the next, let me just grab this from me. And depends on the applicant's availability as well. Pushed out, what is that, March 5 or 6?
It's March 6.
Yeah, we, we, March 6, and then after that, it would be...
Long time.
The pencil in this case.
April 17.
Carry it till March 6 without further notice if council will get me an opinion letter or my office an opinion letter at least a week in advance of the hearing. Which would be next Friday. As to whether or not the approvals are still valid. Mr. Healy, I don't, as I said, if board members have seen it, I don't recall seeing the 2020 resolution in anyone's.
It's in one of the documents on the website. I'm looking at it right here. I can show you my screen if you want.
That's why it's not a touchscreen. When we come back on the 6, we'll put you back in as number one. And I'll be in touch with you, Mr. Burkey, between then and now.
I'd also take a look to the extent, it may not be in your office, but maybe it priced me, so I think handled the original application.
I think it was Stan Zion.
Whoever, I guess, I see some from them. See if they can, by some chance, there is a fence pictures back from the 2017 application?
We'll dig those out, absolutely.
Which might assist the board in taking a look at what they had suggested it looked like as it compares to simply putting a bunch of color renderings of what, you know, it could look like. If it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, but if it does exist, obviously it will assist the board accordingly.
Understood.
Okay, March 6.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to carry this application.
I, I move that we carry application ZBA 16-00033 in the name of NYSSMSA Limited Part DBA Verizon Wireless until March 6, at which time a decision will be reached as to whether the original granted variance from 2020 is still valid.
And/or 2017.
That is with no further notice, correct?
At 7:30 PM or soon thereafter, the matter may be heard without further notice.
Thank you.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal? Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, just for the record, yes, Mr. Stan Zio was here for the 2020, but I did see a check somewhere along the way from Price Mees.
Makes sense.
Back to the 2016 applications. You might want to talk to both firms and see if by some chance they might have it.
Okay, next would be Muslim Foundation ZBA 250001, major subdivision in which the applicant's requesting to subdivide lot 36.1 into two lots at 45 and 47 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset Lot 468.09, Lot 36.01 and 37.02 in the R40 zone.
Chairman, can we get a motion to adjourn the... Okay. Just for the purpose of the record, Mike Ford, who is from Van Cleef, I'm sure will be introduced and I see each other on almost weekly basis in Hillsborough, so it's a change of pace to see Michael somewhere else. Who's represented counsel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, counsel, board members. Is this mic on or no?
No, they're all on.
There we go. Okay, now you can hear me.
This is half the battle.
All right, I'm getting there. My name is John DeLuca of the law firm Savalshak. I'm here representing Muslim Foundation for application ZBA 250001. This is a major subdivision application for the property located at 45 and 47 Cedar Grove Lane. These parcels are designated as Block 468.09, Lots 36.01 and Lot 37.02. They are located in the R40 zone where houses of worship and schools are permitted as conditional uses. The existing conditions on the site are that of a house of worship as well as a school and a residential dwelling. The proposal tonight involves taking two lots that already exist and simply redrawing the lot lines to simplify it in the greatest simple terms possible. So we, this applicant has appeared before this board on quite a number of occasions dating back to 2017 to develop the property, to incorporate more property within it, acquiring nearby land and expanding. But tonight, we don't propose any additional improvements other than some minor landscaping and moving a fence, which Mr. Ford will explain in a moment. But it's important to note that the operations will not change, the uses will not change. It's simply, we are only here to shift some lot lines on the tax map. So as I mentioned, the property does include those two parcels. So Lot 37.02 is where the house of worship exists. Lot 36.01 is where the single family dwelling exists. The applicant will be purchasing a portion of that residential lot, which will then be consolidated into what I'm going to refer to as the House of Worship lot. So there's two lots today. There will be two lots, assuming this application is approved. But we are re-seeking to draw those lot lines. And to do so, we do require a major subdivision approval. The reason we require major subdivision approval and not minor is because this property, as I mentioned, was subdivided within the last 10 years. Your ordinance defines a minor subdivision, or I should say defines a major subdivision as anything that is not a minor, and this project is excluded because it has been subdivided within the last 10 years. The other item of relief we are seeking is a D3 variance for deviations from conditions, or I should say deviations from conditional use standards for a school in a residential district. So your ordinance sets forth various conditional uses for the R40 zone. One of those is schools, also houses of worship. But I want to call your attention to the standards related to buffering around the school. The ordinance requires staggered trees. We don't exactly comply with that in our proposal, and the reason is because we're not developing in that area a lot, but Mr. Ford will get into that in more detail. So the only other items I want to put on the record are that this has been adequately noticed and it has been published in, it has been adequately published and noticed to neighboring property owners, and for that reason, this board does have jurisdiction and authority to hear this matter. So I will wrap up my opening and ask that Mr. Ford be sworn in to testify.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. DeLuca, just for the purposes of the record, your client owns Lot 37.02, is that correct?
That is accurate.
They do not own Lot 36.01, is that correct?
That is also accurate.
So this is conditioned, obviously, on obtaining ownership of the property, is it not?
Well, we are under contract to purchase the portion that we're taking in, and we do have the consent of the owner of 36.01.
But as a condition, it would be that your client obviously ultimately owns the property because subdividing into somebody's property they don't own...
That's correct.
Takes all the fun out of it, I think.
Yeah, you make a very good point, Mr. Bernstein. So yes, this would be, this major subdivision would be perfected upon the closing of sale.
Other than Mr. Ford, is anyone else going to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, we will have Dr. Jaffrey, who is sitting to my left, testifies.
Why don't we, Mr. Ford will move the mic between the two of them. He's familiar with the move the mic closer. Raise your right hand, sir. Testimony are both about to give. Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Okay. We'll get to each one of you in terms of names, et cetera, when you testify. Mr. Ford, you're going to be the first witness?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, will you spell your full name, indicate by whom you're employed, your credentials, et cetera?
Okay. Good evening. I'm Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, employed with Van Cleef Engineering. 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey is our business address, and I've appeared before this board.
And nothing's changed since we...
No, it hasn't.
I'll accept it.
Thank you.
Still licensed?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Ford, what can you tell us about the existing conditions and, you know, maybe clarify for the board what I was talking about with those shifting lot lines?
Wait, before you go any further, Mr. Ford, you have a really nice looking big picture of all the paper. Do you think we can put it up on the screen?
Does this work?
Yeah, it should work.
No, the red light's on. It should be on.
What, Christine?
I'm telling him the red light is on the TV. It should be on.
You spend all this good money on a TV screen? There we go.
Sure, okay, so this is the color rendering?
I don't think there's enough screens, Mike, so just in case.
Counsel, can we mark this as A1?
Yeah, why don't we mark it A1 and have Mr. Ford indicate what A1 represents?
We have three sheets as part of A1. Sheet one is an existing condition plan dated November 13th, 2024. The second sheet is the preliminary subdivision plan dated November 11th, November 13th, 2024. And then the third sheet is entitled amended buffer landscape plan dated November 13th, 2024. They're an accurate representation of the plans that were submitted as part of the application, and we have simply colorized them for the exhibits this evening. And I was going to go right to the last sheet, the amended buffer plan, because what you see on that is...
Why don't we wait till all the board members get them? Christine, have you got a copy? Yeah, actually, we're going to mark this exhibit A1, A2, and A3. A1 is the front sheet. A2 is the middle, and A3 is the back. Mr. Ford has previously testified as to what the three pages constitute. So we're looking at A3, Mr. Ford?
Actually, I went back to A1, so we'll just take it in order. I thought that actually, this gives you the existing condition, and what you see is the existing religious facility and the school on existing lot 37.02. And it's, I'll say, a reverse P shape. I'm tracing it now. It's just over 7.5 acres in size. And then the exist, and that's owned by the applicant. And then to the upper right-hand corner of the page, also fronting on Cedar Grove Lane is existing lot 36.01. And the board may recall, I was here as part of application ZB 2209 for the prior minor subdivision that took the rear two and a half acre portion of Lot 36.01 essentially and added it to the Muslim Foundation's property. And that was perfected by deed. The Muslim Foundation owns that property, and as part of a subsequent application, after the minor subdivision was approved, what we, I think, referred to as the cleanup plan, we received board approval to essentially clean up some of the dead and diseased existing vegetation on that two and a half acres we acquired and clean it up and provide some buffering along our northerly property line as well as the easterly property line, which is the rear property line of 36.01. And that property line disappears part of this application as was indicated by Mr. DeLuca. It's essentially, we're shifting that lot line just once again, making, and I'll go to the next exhibit, A2, we call it. And of course, we changed the boundary line colors on this exhibit just to challenge you a little bit. The prior ones were yellow, now these are, is it cyan? I'm expressing some frustration about why not just be consistent with colors, but that's the rendering that we've got, and the cyan colors show the proposed condition. So you see 36.01 with the existing dwelling becoming smaller, and an additional two acres of 36.01 to be added to the Muslim Foundation's property, making it just over 9.6 acres in size. And I'll point out to the board that that substantially exceeds the bulk standard requirement for minimum lot size for this use, which is 120,000 square feet or 2.75 acres. So the 9.6 acres increases the size of the existing conditional use, that is, the school and the religious institution. And I think that's important in substantiating the D3 variance similar to my testimony as part of the prior minor subdivision by virtue of the lands increasing in size, and those lands increasing in size to provide a greater buffer between the existing facilities and the surrounding properties enhances that buffer, increases the size of that buffer in the last application from about 40 feet to over 300 feet. And now you see in the front with the school, again, the area of buffering between us and our closest neighbors to the north where the properties being added are substantially increased. I think that helps to support part of the relief we're requesting with regards to the conditional use requirements, and that is a tract perimeter buffer is required. And I'll go now to A3. We'll see what color the property lines are. We're back to yellow, so now you can see a little better. So you see the yellow property lines, and these again represent the proposed condition. Basically, I'm highlighting now in the middle of the page at the rear of this substantially wooded existing highlighted green vegetated area of Lot 36.01. That lot line is eliminated, as well as the property line between us and existing 36.01 is eliminated. And as I'm tracing now, this becomes the new lot line. So you see how these two acres and the lot line shift substantially increase that buffer between us and our nearest neighbors to the north. And part of the relief we're requesting is that in this area where there's existing vegetation, and I hope you can see me highlighting it, along our northerly, our new northerly property line, and our new easterly property line, there's existing vegetation. And as was stated as part of the introduction of the application, there's no proposed improvements as part of this application. That includes even the aspect of a cleanup, if you will. That existing vegetated area will remain unchanged. And what is being amended or changed is by virtue of the elimination of this existing property line is that part of the prior approvals included a fence in this area between the Muslim Foundation property and the remaining lands of Lot 36.01. By virtue of that lot line going away, the fence is no longer needed there, and we're proposing to relocate that fence along this portion of our northerly property line, consistent with the fence that we had previously approved to install along this portion of the northerly property line. And that fence is actually in, so it's, since we own it, we're going to take it out and relocate it. And then as part of the prior approval, there was a buffer planting screening proposed along this rear property line, if you will, of Lot 36.01 that is no longer necessary because that lot line's being eliminated. And we're going to eliminate that landscaping, and there's no need to plant it elsewhere by virtue of the substantial existing vegetation to remain.
Mr. Ford, can we go back to A1 for a minute?
Yes.
So just for the purposes of the record, the current property owned by your client is everything, if you would indicate what...
I think maybe an easier way to describe it is 36.01 is this vegetated area where there's a substantial amount of existing trees and the existing dwelling. Everything beyond that, the cleared area at the rear of that existing dwelling lot, as well as the school, the mosque, and the existing building in the front that was previously approved for a daycare facility, that's all part of the applicant's property.
But it's not part of 36.01?
Correct. Right. Yeah, 37.02 is the property I just described. That's the seven and a half acre parcel existing condition. And then 36.01 is the wooded area with the trees, and that's where we're taking two acres from that and adding it to 37.02.
So you've explained an awful lot here in the first few minutes of this, and a lot of it was very difficult for me to understand. But especially the part where you were talking about the different fences being moved and a buffer area and that it doesn't have to move. And I got a couple of questions for you. Number one, why are you talking about those things? If all we're doing here is trying to move some property lots lines around, what is the importance of your comments about the buffering areas?
Sure.
Are we going to, are we by granting these changes to these lot lines? Are we also sort of by allowing this, allowing something else to occur?
Yes, and a good question. And let me explain so that...
It's a miracle I was able to ask one after that, so...
Sorry. So the fence that I'm referring to is, and I'm highlighting it now, is this existing property line along the, is existing along the existing property line at the rear of 36.01. It's on our property. It's a security fence for our property.
Okay.
And that's why we're taking it out and then adaptive reuse of it, removing it and moving it to our new property line.
But it has nothing to do, it's sort of like an interesting story that really has nothing to do with what we're trying to do here, does it?
Well, it's connected in the sense that part of our relief... Well, it's connected in the sense that part of our relief is that we don't meet all the conditions of the conditional use. And we haven't since day one on this application, and that's with regards to the buffering. And the buffer requirement of the town is 15 or 25 feet, and that depends on whether you have a fence, a solid fence, or landscaping. So that fence was part of security, but also tied into our buffer. And that's the other aspect that I described this evening, which is by virtue of eliminating this property line, that buffering is no longer needed.
Do you want to remove it?
We want to remove it.
Mr. Ford, let me just explain why the, why the buffering's being... They're proposing this subdivision, and part of that is they're acquiring additional land that's now going to be part of their campus. The entirety of their campus is required to be screened per the ordinance. So by gaining that additional land, that additional land also needs to be screened with that triple-staggered row, 25-foot, what have you. So that's why they're before, frankly, that's why they're before this board, because it's a conditional use standard that they're proposing not to comply with. So they're seeking subdivision approval and this conditional use variance. And basically, what you're hearing is that the justification for that is that at this point, all they're doing is acquiring land. They're not doing any physical modifications, not building whatever. You know, last time they were doing, you know, some grading and removing some trees, so the board required some landscaping. Here, what they're showing here is, again, they're acquiring that area, pretty much that area that's in green, and they're showing you that they don't need landscaping, A, because they're not proposing any physical modifications at this time, and all of that forested area is going to remain. And along, I guess, the northerly boundary, they are still proposing some landscape screening. So I mean, I think that's the application in a nutshell.
And how is the applicant going to demarcate the new lot that will be owned by the church, not by your client, but by the church?
The dwelling.
The dwelling, yeah, when you refer, that's another religious institution.
Right. You're proposing to take the existing three-acre lot and leave a little under an acre for the dwelling of the church. How is there going to be a demarcation between the back of that property and the beginning of your client's property once they acquire that piece if this subdivision is granted?
Well, we would set property corners as part of the subdivision, and I'm not aware of any other improvements in that area.
You're going to rely on the existing landscape vegetation that's there?
Yeah.
Now, there's something else that came up with what you said. Is 36.03 owned by the Muslim Foundation?
No.
That's not, right? And it's not...
A3, A3.
That's the proposed new lot, 36.03. So that area, no, is not owned by the Muslim Foundation.
And that's going to remain privately owned?
By, yeah, correct, by...
Okay, then my next question would be, which he pointed out, it's .9 acres.
Correct.
I would expect to see a totally, completely conforming lot left from the subdivision. It's not a lot of land involved, but if that new lot that's being created there is under the R, it's under R-40 zone. So whoever lives there, that affects them if they want to do something impervious coverage on it. It should be, if we have all this land and we're making all these new lines, then we should have a completely conforming lot left out of it.
Yeah, lot 36.03, the proposed condition, will meet the R-40 zone criteria. It's over 40,000 square feet. And as far as impervious coverage, we've calculated that for the existing condition on the smaller lot. The total impervious coverage would be 12.6% where 20 is allowed. So there is some, you know, area for another 8% or so that improvements could be done on that property. And frankly, actually, our goal would be to acquire that sooner or later, too.
It's just, it's confusing. All I want to be sure is that it's a totally conforming lot and area. We say it's a one-acre zone, that's 45,000 square feet, but then we call it a R-40, 40,000 square feet. This says it's .9. I'm not doing the math in my head, but I think it would be irresponsible for us to leave even a slightly undersized lot as a result of all this.
Bob, it complies. It's, R-40 requires 40,000 square feet, and this is 40,000 and change.
Okay, so...
It's just about 40.
.922...
Is, so, an acre is 43,560.
Okay.
So R-40, 40,000 is actually .9 acres.
Make it simple. Yes or no?
Yes.
This would be a totally conforming lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the subdivision doesn't create any new non-conformities. And the only remaining non-conformity is the rear setback to the existing school, which was part of a prior approval.
And that...
And that exists, yeah. So it's totally complying.
That's fine. Stranger things have happened and slipped through before, so thank you.
Yep, good question. So I think that the application can be granted without any substantial impairment or detriment to the public good or any adverse impacts to the township zone. You know, we're essentially providing the buffer by virtue of leaving the natural vegetation there. And I think just to state on the record in closing is that one of the comments in the TRC report, which will comply with each and every one of them to their satisfaction, is, and there's just two that I need to speak to. One is that we agree to and understand any approval this board grants is with the understanding that there's no improvements to be made, other than the fence and the landscaping that we've described, no improvements to be made to the property without coming back to the board. So if there's any changes in the institution, we'd be back with another site plan application, if you will. And again, at that point, with regards to the buffer non-conformity, the buffers can be revisited at that time when they become important because improvements are being made. And then the last, I'll say, is a housekeeping item. There was a comment in the TRC report about, and I'm highlighting it now on A3, a rectangle at the rear right-hand corner of the school. That's like a storage container that was placed on site. That'll be removed. Sorry, I took too much time.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the, not your compound, but that building on, what's it, 36.01? What's that current use?
That's a dwelling, as far as I, my understanding.
Is it, I mean, it says the owner is Holy Virgin Protection Russian Orthodox Church on your plans.
Right. A religious institution owns it, but it's used as a house.
But it's not, it's a permitted use?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, my question was if it was going to be a house of worship, it would have been a non-conforming use and potentially an exasperation of that non-conforming use. That's where I was going with that, but...
No, it's a good question. We're aware that it's owned by, but we've never known it to be...
Used as anything other than a single-family home.
Mr. Ford, you're not done yet. I look at the, at A3, or yeah, it's A3, and there's the yellow borderline, and there's also a dotted line inside of the borderline. Is that, is that a setback line? What is that?
Yeah, there's two, there's two dash lines. The thicker dash line closer to the property line represents that 25-foot landscape buffer, if you will, the key element of the reason we're here and the, seeking the D3 variance. That's the area along our tract boundary, as I think Mr. Healy put it best, where we're not proposing that buffer, but technically it is required. And the other lighter dash line further into the property is the building setback line.
Okay, and I can see the building setback line appears at the, at the back of the property. I don't, and I guess I do see it now on, on the other side, and the other side is the buffer. Okay, I got it.
Any other? I guess you're done.
I have no further questions for Mr. Ford, no.
Yeah, I gotta try and simplify this for my own thinking. What's happening here is the, is your client is buying some of the land that is in 36.01. Buying both length and width of that lot, correct? Is anything else happening?
No.
You talked a long time to get to that point.
At this time, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
I guess that in light of those comments, it would be maybe appropriate to mention, too, at some point recently, there's been a sign on the property, office space for rent. That would be, in my, my thinking, I would think that is a not approved use.
For purpose of the record, sir, state your full name, spell your last name and your relationship to the applicant.
Iqbal Jafri, J-A-F-R-I. First name, I-Q-B-A-L. My relationship to the entity is I'm the chairman of Muslim Foundation.
You heard the question from the chairman about the sign?
Yes, sir. The sign is for the rent for the daycare, not the plain office, just the daycare.
Okay, but it's a commercial sign that advertises office space for rent.
It will be removed because this is the old sign, and we have asked for the rent for daycare, not any commercial office.
Okay, just crossing all the Ts.
And a good T to be crossed.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Jafri, since you've been sworn in and we've begun questioning you, you mentioned that you're the chairman of the Muslim Foundation. Can you just, you know, briefly go over what uses do exist on the site, focusing on the two buildings towards the rear?
The uses are place of prayer, which is mosque, and for worship, and we have a school in the back.
Okay, and now this expanded area towards the north, this new land that you've acquired over the last couple of years and the new land that you're hoping to acquire, do you have any specific intent or plan to use that land in any particular way at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, and do you understand that if you were to develop that plan and change the use of the property in any way, or improve the property anyway, that you would have to come back before this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Jaff.
Anything from the board?
It's confusing.
That's it?
That's all?
We're open to the public. If there's any public who want to ask a question, it looks like we're not getting anything there, so we'll close. Anything you want to say?
I'll just reiterate that the relief we are seeking is a major subdivision approval and the D3 use variance. So that's a deviation from conditional use standards. As we've articulated probably over and over again in many different ways, hopefully not too confusing, but it's that buffer requirement for the school. So every school in Franklin Township that's located within a residential zone is required to have a vegetation buffer around the property. Obviously, you've heard this plan explained exhaustively. We don't comply with that standard for a conditional use. We are deviating from that standard, so we do require the D3 variance. So it's the major subdivision approval and the D3 variance. No other improvements, no changes to the use.
Mr. DeLuca, your client has no problems. Two conditions. One, that you'll provide the zoning and planning office with a copy of the deed as to the property your client is acquiring from the church...
Absolutely.
...to prove that they are in fact the owners. And the second is, if you have any, client has any intention of touching any of that wooded area in the buffer that they're planning on currently using without planting, when they're going to have to come back before this board to deal with the buffer issue?
Absolutely. The only caveat that I would request in articulating that condition is if there is a hazard tree, I would hope my client would be able to remove it without coming back before the board.
So you want to have him indicate on the map what the hazard tree is and...
I don't know that there is a hazard tree. I just, you know, in, in reading through many tree ordinances throughout the state of New Jersey, I know that there is often...
You spend too much time at the firm.
I sure do. But I know that there's often exemption for hazard trees in the event that there were one discovered, rather than waste the board time or my client's time and money.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I would say that in a way, that's really not even the board's jurisdiction. We do have a tree removal ordinance and trees that are, if it's, if it's, if there's a hazardous condition, they can, they can seek approval for that.
Subject to the hazardous condition, if they decide to clearcut all the trees back there because it's a hazardous condition...
If it's exempt under chapter 222, then the ordinance already covers it. Otherwise, they're subject to, you know, the tree ordinance and the site plan ordinance and everything else.
So the answer is subject to a hazard tree issue. Your client understands that any change in that buffer will require a return visit relative to same...
Absolutely.
...whether they develop the property or not.
Yes.
And obviously, the third condition is any change in the condition of the property requires board.
Understood.
Okay, any other issues? Any board comments or anything from Mr. Healy or our attorney, then we're able to entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that we grant the Muslim Foundation a major subdivision variance under ZBA 25-0001, which will allow the applicant to subdivide lot 36.01 into two lots at 45 and 47 Cedar Grove Lane, block 468.09, lots 36.01 and 37.02.
Well, I think it's actually going to be 37.03 and 36.03. Is that the proposal?
Yeah, that's the ones, that's the new ones, right.
Along with a D3 variance and technical preliminary and final site plan approval, subject to the three conditions previously agreed upon.
A second?
Okay.
Sharon Robethia?
Yes.
Richard Propanik?
Yes.
Vaseem Verdas?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
And Chairman Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. All favor. Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.